Okay, this May 1st, 2019, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Before we get started, I'd like just to acknowledge the passing of Joe DuVall. At age 32, Joe is the son of Kelly DuVall and Thomas DuVall. Kelly has been a long-term aide at Mastway. And Joe was a student at Mastway, and my wife actually had him in 4th grade. Wonderful kid, went on to play football at Dover High School, I believe. So our thoughts go out to the family, to Joe's wife, to his kids, and certainly to the staff of Mastway. I know this has been a very difficult time, but I know you've been a great support, so our thoughts are with you. I know that the approval of the agenda comes later, but I'm wondering if there are people who have a public comment, whether we might have that after the presentation from the architect, rather than have that at 8:45. Would people be okay with that?
Is the architect here yet?
Yeah.
Oh, he's right there. Oh, I'm sorry. Right behind Sue, I couldn't see. I thought you were still down the hall at Ace.
So the public comment is scheduled to be after the strategic plan workshop, so we'll move that up, but we want to have, give the architect first, you know, ask him to wait. So would that be all right with people, if we had the public comment between the architect's presentation and the strategic plan workshop? Would that be workable for people?
Do we want to even do it before the middle school?
How many people hear us speak?
I'm okay waiting.
What?
Doesn't matter, I like to hear the architect.
I think we'd wait, because we'd rather than ask him if that's okay. Okay? And so, without further ado, thank you for coming again. Good to see you.
Oh, thanks. Good to see you. If you don't mind, I'll just connect this up.
Sure.
So again, this is just an update to the board as to what's been going on and what we've been doing with the building committee. And...
I like that look for the school.
Yeah. So that's the new building. We're trying to be as green as possible. So this, there you go. Now I know how to fix that. That's a good thing. Okay, so as we start to develop the plans with the building committee, we're actually starting to look at actual spaces within the building and how the building's going to function. But we're also looking at the character of the interior of the building. So what you're looking at here is the development of the first floor plan. What you see in red are administrative spaces, and you can see that they're on the three corners of the school. And then there is an office just off of the kitchen that's also basically administrative office. So as we spoke about last time, it gives us eyes on all four sides. Let's see. Maybe I should get out of this, so I can just turn the page. And then, as you walk into the front door, some of the character that we've been sort of thinking about is to really create a sense of place at that front lobby, if you will. Then there's also been a discussion, if you look at the sketch here, sort of towards the back, about actually having a glass wall with some doors that separate the main common area from the lobby space, and that would take care of acoustics and things while the students are eating. It would also allow for some acoustics and another layer of security when the public's coming into the building and folks are there. However, you know, as welcoming as we want to be in a school, you know, you can decide to keep those doors open or not even have the glass wall. You know, it's sort of, it's one of the things that the committee's been talking about. But this would be the lobby, with the idea that as you come in, maybe there's a screen on the left-hand side that explains to the community all the sustainability factors and features of the building, a place to rest, and then the band storage, instrument storage that we talked about would be in this area right here. And then on the other side, we have some utility spaces like public restrooms and such. As you go further into the building, this is the common area where the students would dine, the library would extend out to for all other times of the day when the two dining periods are not taking place. On the right-hand side, you'd be able to see into the recital hall. And on the left-hand side, you'd be able to peek into the gymnasium, but we'd also have lots of display for student work that could go on in that space. Upstairs, we have two health classrooms that overlook that space. There's a walkway to the balcony of the recital hall. And then at the far end, we would have the library proper itself at the end of the learning commons, and then STEM and art up on the second floor, so you'd be able to see those areas as well. So that common area really talks all about the students and the health and wellness of the students with the phys ed area, the specials, in other words, art and STEM and music and health, and it's all right there in the core of the building as one large extension of the library. Yep?
Just have a few questions, David. Possible glass wall partition, are we now on the other side of?
Yes.
So we're there. How high up is the spacer? Is it two stories or does it go up to the...
It's two stories.
Two stories. And what about noise? Kind of just thinking, you've got some hard surfaces kind of framing that space.
Yep.
How do you make that not go up?
So, yep, great questions. So acoustically, all of the surface areas for the ceilings and even the surface areas of these walls, which are high above, can be acoustic treatments on the space itself. We can talk about what type of flooring we have. And then up above, you know, we can hang some light fixtures down, and we can also hang some other acoustic products, if you will, to absorb the sound. So it's something that our acoustic engineer would work closely with the team to make sure that we are keeping the noise levels down during the lunch periods. You know, libraries today, especially public libraries, are loud libraries, right? So the idea is that you want to contain that loud library, so it doesn't disturb maybe some music going on. So there'd be acoustic wall separations, so that glass wall that you see there would be an acoustic frame, so that the music taking place wouldn't disturb lunch, and lunch wouldn't disturb the music. Same thing with the phys ed, and same thing with these upper classrooms.
Just to continue with the glass to the recital hall, how would that be as far as acoustically within the recital hall? You know, because I'm just thinking that, you know, glass is, I guess, an unfamiliar...
Yep. It's a very, it's a hard surface, and music bounces off of it, or I should say...
Should be fine, okay.
Right. However, we are thinking of also having a curtain in front of that glass, which is also an acoustic curtain. So in certain performances, when you want that sound to bounce off the back wall behind the orchestra, you will have it. But in other instances where you want that sound to be absorbed, we can close the curtain.
Okay.
And then we can also close the curtain if you're having some other type of presentation in that space, because even though that space is designed to be a performance space, you could also envision guest speakers coming in there, all sorts of other types of events where you may want to close the curtains, because it's going on at some point in the day or some point in the weekend where other activities are taking place in the school. So to that point, if we go up to the second floor, we continue with the specials on the second floor, which is world language. We have more music in terms of the chorus room, and then our art and our STEM areas. But the balcony is also accessible. You may also notice, and I want to just point out, that we've been talking about having two elevators in the building. The two elevators in the building do two things. Number one, it gives us an elevator on what we'll call the public side of the second floor, so we can lock down the rest of this when the recital hall balcony is being used. But it also cuts the distance in half for any student who's on crutches or in a wheelchair, or any faculty member who may need assistance at any point during the year. It really cuts down that distance of how far they need to travel to get to an elevator. And that balcony and the glass wall that you were just mentioning, you know, the recital hall may take on a language that's similar to the rest of the school, but in many ways reflect music. So if you can imagine that glass wall there, which looks into the common space, we would have some curtains that would be able to close for both acoustics and for vision. The balcony itself would look down onto that performance space. We talked last time about not having a stage. So by not having a stage, you really focus everybody's attention down to that central space where the performance takes place. And this, what you see here are some clouds and some lighting and such. And again, it wouldn't be designed for drama, but it would be designed specifically for music events. Yep?
Can I just say a question about this design? Because when you look at it, actually, I mean, when you build a performance space, the biggest thing is to have good sound coming back. And so the generalized, really most common design is to have it curved and then tiered down, so the sound is coming out. So if you look at that design, actually, you have, it's almost in the round, the people on the sides actually are behind, are looking the side. So the sound, I'm questioning kind of what their sound would be like. And then the second thing is, the problem with the glass wall is like, if you decide to use it as more of a multipurpose, and that is like, if you're going to have video back behind it, there's no way to do it. It's like, I mean, the, most of the theaters that I just went in, toured in, they actually had, like, in fact, for the light, they had LED screening back behind, so it allows it to be more multipurpose. I think this design kind of limits your options in some way. So I've just, have you, has this design been done somewhere? Did you see it somewhere? Can we, did we get feedback from it? I mean, I kind of...
Sure. Good question. So there are many little recital halls, if you will, of this size that have been done, I won't say the same as this, because I don't think we've copied, we haven't intentionally copied any recital space. We do have a recital hall consultant working with us, and as he starts to look at this, I think the sound shells that you're talking about are things that we can either bring into the realm when they're needed and also bring them out, as opposed to fixing them in place. But we can certainly do that. I think the comment about display is really good, because we've talked about that a lot at the committee level, where we're thinking, and you don't see them here in the rendering, but maybe even having three screens. So one focused in this direction, one in this direction, and one towards the main house, where there are digital displays.
Yeah, exactly what I saw at Shunde, the first one. They had three, a main, where the big glass window would be like kind of a main display, and there was one to the side. Again, but the concern I still see is like, again, if you look at where you have your band there, you're literally behind the band at the, you know, those upper tiers. And I don't know if you've ever been to Fenway and sat at Wright Field, but during that performance, you're going to be going like this the whole way. So it's like, those side seatings are more like an arena seating than a performance thing. Is there any way, I mean, you can pull them back, you know what I mean, so that you're still in front of seeing, either you have to push the band back to the window or tier the seating, you know what I'm saying? Because those, those sides are really not particularly great setups for a performance.
Right. And I think you're correct. I think what we would want to do, if this were filled and we had the full orchestra, would, they'd be up against the back, they'd be up against the glass, if you will. I haven't been, I've been to Fenway, but not during a concert. Although I would have loved to go see Jimmy Buffett, but that's another story. We do have tiered seating, so you're at the floor level, and the seating immediately starts to rise. I think if we go back to the plan a little bit, you may see the proportions, is that the space is really out here in front of the glass, and then the seats are back a ways. Having said that, what we can do is do some more renderings, do some more, give some more thought to everything that you're talking about, work with the acoustic engineers and the recital hall engineers, you know, just to make sure we have sightlines. We can also bring some photos in. I know that the Gardner Museum in Boston has a very intimate recital hall in the middle of it, and that is one that, obviously, this doesn't copy, but it's very similar in that you sit at the side and see the orchestra, or you sit in front and see the orchestra. Those balconies are very steep. So to that point, I think it's interesting to, maybe we could present different types of recital halls and how they work, and a lot of them duplicate both drama and music. And the ones that just focus on music, we also visited the Boston Conservatory, the new building in Boston, just next to Berklee School of Music. And they had a very similar space where you sort of go around the orchestra when they play. So definitely good comments, and it's definitely something we're going to continue to develop as we move forward.
Just as a follow-up, and I think those points were real valid. Right now, music is certainly kind of primary in our middle school, and certainly we build something to reflect what's primary, but I think we also want to be building perhaps anticipatory and also being able to accommodate. And I hope that we're not shortchanging drama to satisfy the needs of our current music, because just as music, music is something we emphasize. You know, we, as you're aware, we changed our kind of program, we brought in the strings program, but certainly they're advocates for drama in our community, and perhaps that pendulum might swing. And if we have a space that's really designed for recital and not so functional for drama, I think we're going to be kicking ourselves 10, 12 years down, or who knows? So I think to Al's point, that we want to make it really good to listen to a performance, I think we should really design in an anticipatory way to meet other needs and not lock into the current, but look to the future. Does that make sense?
So if I may, Kenny. So the current, the current performance center in the high school is designed purposely for drama and not music. So you could, so the idea here is to have drama happen at the high school, where we have all the staging and all the devices that we need and all of that. A music recital hall doesn't require all of that equipment, and so one of the rationales behind making this a music recital hall is that the number of kids who have, who are participating in music, literally are in the hundreds in between the two buildings. And so right now, when we do a music performance at the high school, like we did most recently with Mastway, we had standing room only. On the 8th, we'll be doing the strings program, we'll be in the gymnasium at the high school, because the auditorium at the high school no longer services that need. I don't anticipate that music is going to go through cycles. I mean, we have an amazing program, and so now we have a space that's dedicated to drama, then we'll have a space that's dedicated to music, which doesn't mean this space can't be used for other things. It just means that we're not going to invest in the staging and all of the equipment that is involved in being able to have an optional drama space. So that's really the kind of mindset we've been working on, two dedicated spaces, one for drama and performance, and one for music. But this space could just as easily be used for presentations, it could be used for Shakespearean theater in the round where they don't use staging, it could be used for modern theater where they don't use staging. So I don't think that, even though this is principally being designed for music, the one thing it wouldn't be able to do is put on a full-fledged play, because it's not designed that way, but we have the high school. But it would be able to do many other things besides music.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I guess I agree with the concern, though. Almost every performance I've been to in the auditorium here at the high school is at or near capacity. And so regardless of what this is designed for, the groups are going to want to use this space if they anticipate having more than 500 people in the audience. So we need to really consider how this is going to be used when we try to shoehorn a play into there, because that's going to happen the first year. I don't think that's a down-the-road thing. I don't think that's anticipating future needs. I think that's, as soon as the building's open.
Sure. So I've gone to many of the plays, I'll never say all of them. Denise and I tend to meet each other at all of the performances. And the places where we exhaust the space are music. They're never drama.
Yeah.
When we do one-act plays, we don't fill that auditorium. When we do musicals, we mostly fill it, but it's over a three or four-day period, so that never gets exhausted in that instance either. So I think that the flexibility will be there, it just won't be, you don't want to duplicate here what you have at the high school. One, because it's expensive. I mean, if we want to have a full-fledged stage here with flying, whatever they call them, buttresses, or whatever they call them, the light structures and all of that, you'll add $2, $3 million to the space. So the idea is two dedicated spaces, and we know when we exhaust the space at the high school, it is music, it's not drama. Could it be? Of course it could be, but, you know, we've had some really popular plays at the high school, and we never have standing room only. We usually, everybody has a seat. I mean, that's been my experience, and Denise goes as much as I do, so...
And I, I mean, I totally agree, and I'm not suggesting music will fall out of favor, but I think, I think I raised it based on what Al said, too, is if we want to look at the full potential of that space, we should really be looking at both the acoustic and sightlines for people who might be in the corner, and we should try to maximize that, not duplicate the high school.
I totally agree with those comments.
Yes.
Totally. I just wanted to give you the sense of why we're purposing the two spaces differently.
All right. So when we get to it, what you're looking at right now are hand sketches, just to sort of give the flavor of the experience of the space. When we start getting into 3D modeling of the space itself, like some of the things that we've shown a little earlier, you'll be able to see that. We'll be able to put the camera sort of in the right-hand piece of the balcony and see exactly what they're, what they're looking at. I'm not saying this won't get adjusted, because as we develop the space, it will, and as our consultant gets more involved in this, he may bring up exactly what's been brought up here tonight. But we definitely want to create a space that, you know, as Dr. Moore said, we can do presentations, we can do all sorts of things. But I think the primary thing is to make sure acoustically it works perfect for the music program. And then everything else is just icing on the cake, I would suggest. Any other thoughts about the recital hall? One thing that Jim Rizicky had brought up, which was a great idea, was that the performance floor, the actual floor that defines the performance space, should be the same type of athletic floor as the PE gym, so that you could also have dance in here, you know, so that you could also have those kinds of events. And that was interesting and a good idea and a good thought for us to look into.
I mean, the only thing about that is you'll have to have more treatment, because a hard floor is reflective. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's a lot of surface to bounce the sound out. You don't want it echoing. But again, I think you already have an engineer, and tuning the room will be a big thing.
Yep.
How much do we think that the, when the glass will be open or not curtained during the day? If we're using this space, is there going to be too much distraction in the learning commons for...
Well, actually, the idea behind the windows is so that the music department could actually turn themselves right around and do performances for the kids. You know, we'll have a sound system that goes through the glass, so that, so the idea behind the glass isn't just to make it pretty, it's also so we can do things for the students during the school day. Without having, you know, they could be eating, and we could be doing performances for them, that kind of thing.
So as we go up the, to the third floor and the fourth floor, just as we spoke last time, there's four distinct team areas, and they all have their classroom space. And then there's a central student commons. And the student commons consists of special ed breakout space off of it, the facility workroom, faculty workrooms, rather. We're also designing a breakfast nook, so that as students come into the school every day, they're able to socialize once they get there with other students. That's usually part of the reason why they skip the breakfast piece of it. But if we can then bring sort of grab-and-go items from breakfast up into the student common area, students may be more likely to just grab something as they start their day. And then the fourth floor, obviously, is exactly the same. And what we've talked about in sort of that student common area, if you will, was another glass separation, so that the team areas are acoustically separated from the student commons, yet they're very secure, because we have lots of eyes on the student commons from all four teams. And we would distribute student storage or locker space, if you will, around the student commons. And you'd be able to come out from your team into the common area to do whatever you've got to do without actually leaving the team, because you'd be visually connected with everybody. This is a view of the fourth floor. The third floor would be exactly the same, except it wouldn't have the clear-story windows. And we understand we're showing a lot of glass in these renderings right now, and that's going to get toned down. But what we want to show is where's the priority for the glass? Because what the glass does is it allows the visual connection between all these spaces and let in a lot of natural light. So you can imagine the third floor being similar, and then here on the fourth floor. We did consider at the committee level of having all of the student storage locker space, if you will. And think of these as phenolic lockers, so when you slam them, they don't make noise. They just close. That all of those in the middle would be low lockers, so you'd be able to see over them. And those low lockers provide counter space for yet again another breakout area. And the committee also talked about charging stations, so the students would be able to come up there in the morning, and then in the afternoon, sort of after lunch or before their lunch period, and then at the end of the day, and they'd be able to charge things. It also provides yet another space for breakout, so that faculty members can bring students into the common areas if they need any support, things like that, small groups of students. So really, you're sort of getting the big bang for two bucks in this area, if you will. Number one, it's a common area for the students, but number two, it's also educational space. That was one of the things that the committee has asked us to really consider, is that every inch of this building is used for educational space. Yep.
So the only question I have about those low lockers, if you did have a student who, for whatever reason, couldn't like bend down, you know, how would that, how would that work?
So much like the lockers you have here in the high school, they're about 36 inches tall. Then the locker itself is 30 inches.
Okay.
So the dial would be sort of at the top, or not, not too far down. I'm about the size of a middle school kid, right? So, you know, it would work out pretty well. We do have, it's a good point, too, about handicap. So we will have handicap accessible lockers throughout this as well.
Okay.
I could also add, Ron, that part of the feedback from the students was they didn't like being on the bottom of a two-locker system, because if there was a lot of traffic, a possibility of books falling on them from the person trying to get their stuff out. So we thought this reflected student input by keeping it at a low level.
Right.
So that's essentially, because, you know, we've all been talking about the site and so forth, and we do have our civil engineer who's now working on the site to consider, number one, the amount of asphalt, which was a comment we heard at the last meeting, and number two, to take care of the grades, because we did talk about those grades that come down. And so we're really trying to dial into the site itself. So if that's enough for this evening, we are just now starting to work on the energy aspect of the building. So we had a great meeting with Jay and Jim to talk about how they use the building in terms of an energy scheduling point of view, and we're putting together a basis of design with some options for everybody to look at in terms of how is the building going to operate, everything from the heating system to the cooling system to domestic hot water, anything that uses some kind of energy. One goal is to do an all-electric building for the net-zero-ready target, if you will, and another one is to have some amount of fossil fuel. And we can talk about the pros and cons of that maybe the next time we're here. And we do have the beginnings of a presentation that we'd like to share with everybody in the next few weeks. The next step is to also meet with the faculty and the students again before they leave for vacation, just to give them sort of an update as to where we are and how things are looking, and obviously to receive a lot of feedback and a lot of comments, so that we can work on that when they come back in September, they can take a look at that.
So which, so we're thinking about two weeks from now, four weeks from now for your next visit to us?
Mm-hmm.
So which one?
Oh, whichever you prefer. We'd be ready to...
We'd want you to have enough work done so that it would be new information for the board. So if two weeks, if you're going to have new information that's worth sharing with the board that quickly, yes, but if you don't, then we should stick to our cycle of the first meeting of the month.
Okay. So in two weeks, we could do sort of a sustainability outline of what it is we're doing, because that is going pretty quickly. doing, because that is going pretty quickly. We've had several meetings now, we're starting to hone in, if you will, on a sustainable attribute. That'll be a really boring meeting, because it's going to talk about lots of nuts and bolts and watts and amps, but you get the sense of what we're trying to do to reduce the energy use for the entire building, as well as capture as much daylighting and passive solar heating as we can. So, that would be a great discussion in the next two weeks.
If that's going to be our discussion, we have people in the community who, it may be boring to many people, but there are people who are very, very much into that conversation around sustainability. So, if we know that's going to be the topic, I can put on the agenda Architect Report/Sustainability, and then make sure that that group of people in the three towns know that that's going to be the focus of the conversation, because they're very, very interested in that.
And that's what I would recommend, just so that, you know, there's more information before everybody leaves for the summer. And then the following meeting, we may have more updates in terms of maybe some exterior designs we're doing, maybe some updates based on the comments we received here tonight.
Right. You might have a section geothermal energy for dummies.
I just took that course.
The next time, because, I mean, I think that's a real exciting thing, but for a lot of us, it's pretty science fiction.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, you know, it's really, it's actually kind of a simple system, once you've done it a few times, so I think we could bring some diagrams in, just to show everybody exactly how this works. Like, for instance, it doesn't touch the groundwater. So, I know lots of times when people hear geothermal, they think Iceland, you know, and where they do use the groundwater, but it's not that type of system. So, we should, we should do exactly that.
Okay. So, two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks so much, Ron.
All right, thank you.
Will we have those, are those pictures the sort of thing we would post on the website?
Yes. We actually have, due to Tom's connection and following up on something that Al was passionate about in terms of digital presentations, Tom made a connection with.
Eric Ickes.
Eric Ickes, and he works for Heinemann, and he does digital work all the time. So, we've sent him all the materials we have, including the frequently asked questions, and he's building a, a digital website specifically on the project. So, that's in the process. Is that, was that the answer to your question, Michael? Sometimes I'm.
Well, so, that's great, and I'm looking forward to seeing that, but in the more immediate term, will these be?
Yes. Yeah. We have, we have a dedicated corner in our website where we're putting all of the middle school stuff.
And we have the postcards. Are some of these designs going to be used on the postcards, or?
Yes. So, we have themed postcards coming out, and you want to talk to where we are on the postcard process?
So, we hired an illustrator to.
You got to.
Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, we hired an illustrator to do these lovely sketches in a more professional way, and we actually just got them back yesterday, so we're going to scan them in and add them to the postcard. You remember the postcard that we made from the illustration probably a couple months ago of the exterior? So, it's that same illustrator, and it will be of the recital hall, the same view that we just showed you tonight, but professionally done. And we'll have an updated exterior at some point, and we also did one of the gym, which we haven't shown you yet, so we're excited to show you that. And each, basically, we're going to make a postcard for every sort of category. With Dr. Morris and Denise Day and several others, we've identified probably about seven or eight categories. One will be sustainability, so we'll have a bunch of facts, and one will be the recital hall, another the gym, and still more for ADA and, I think, special education. And each one of these postcards will have that code, that QR code, which will bring you to a website where you'll have the frequently asked questions, as well as all the information that we've been sharing with you, Mr. Williams, to all of these images. And I think, we anticipate updating that as we go, so that everyone gets the pertinent information. So, so the exterior one came out a couple months ago, and probably early next week, we'll be ready with the athletic one and the recital hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, a public comment now? So, introduce yourself, three minutes.
I was going to say, three minutes, right? Okay. Hi, I'm Lauren Selig. I live here in Durham, and I'm actually glad I stayed for that. I have a serious concern about having that much glass in a building. I hope it's all going to be bulletproof, and I don't say that lightly, because I am sure it's just a matter of time till it happens here, as much as we'd like to think it won't. But as you consider what you're putting in that school, the idea of all that glass terrifies me, because all I can picture is the glass shattering on my kids as the AK-47, or whatever those stupid guns are called, fires across the classroom. So, please take that into consideration. On a separate note, the new middle school will not be relevant for my kids, they'll have moved on by that point. But I'd like you to make sure you're really taking financing into consideration for all of that, because I know for a lot of people, the costs of our school system are breaking their backs. So, I hope that you can look for ways to make a meaningful space and a useful space and a productive space without breaking people's finances completely. And finally, I have to say I'm struggling a lot with lack of communication through the district. It is very hard still to track down information, it's a constant struggle to try to navigate the school's website to find what's happening, what changes are coming. I found out that there's going to be a massive shift in teachers at the middle school from my children. One of my kids, it's not going to be relevant, because she'll be at the high school for the next year, but for my other child, where there's a lot of anxiety about the process of being in school, and we've worked so hard to talk about how to anticipate what's coming and how to keep herself in a place of everything's going to be fine, to find out that none of the people she thought were going to be teaching seventh grade next year will be doing that, and so she's going to have to learn a whole new team and a new structure, even though she'll end up having several teachers again. For her, just the idea of it is traumatic, and to be hearing about it from discussions at school or rumors or whatnot, rather than parents getting information first and being able to talk about it with kids in a meaningful way is really problematic. I think Jay does an amazing job with a lot of things at the middle school, but I think district-wide, there's a major communication problem, and, you know, the fact that we get updates that don't include, you know, there's no reason, the school board agenda can't be emailed out every time. There's no reason the minutes can't be emailed out every time. I get emails about things that are so trivial and so insignificant, but I don't ever get emails about any of the major issues that happen in our district, and that really concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anita Mather. I'm going to sort of talk a little bit also about what Lauren just touched on. I'm a graduate of Oyster River High School, and I have a first grader in Mast Way. I watched the video of the April 17th school board meeting, and I saw the presentation about the impending ORMS teacher reassignments that the middle school principal says are necessary to create a stronger culture of collaboration among teachers. I'm pretty concerned about the number of reassignments that are happening all at once, the fact that the majority of the teachers being reassigned did not, seemingly did not request to be reassigned, and the appearance that teachers may not have enough time to create a strong new curricula. I'm also worried about whether all of the reassigned teachers have enough experience to excel in their newly assigned grade levels or subject areas. And finally, I question how these reassignments will create a stronger culture of collaboration. So, I really challenge the administration to achieve this worthy goal through less extreme measures. I attended Oyster River from kindergarten through my high school graduation in 1992. I founded the Oyster River Alumni Association in order to support innovative projects and instructional excellence that has made Oyster River great. Some of the best teachers I've ever had at Oyster River were those who had taught the same grade and subject matter for years before I finally got to their classroom, and thus were able to expose me to amazing learning opportunities that had become cherished school traditions. So, make no mistake, Oyster River has become a leading public school because it retains the best teachers by giving them free rein and support to nurture a course of study they are most passionate about at the grade level of students they are best able to teach. These accomplished teachers are Oyster River's most cherished and commendable asset. I will be very concerned if the innovative instructional programs that have been honed over time by our most experienced teachers are lost in this effort. I sincerely hope that if these reassignments move forward, the school board and Oyster River community will keep very close oversight to ensure that the wonderful middle school programs that have been nurtured over years will not be lost. Our most experienced teachers do not deserve to have their labor of love and hard work forgotten. Incoming middle school students deserve to experience the excellent teaching and programs that Oyster River students have always been so very lucky to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I move to the approval of the agenda. There's one item that will be taken off, the kindergarten teacher request, the high school technology integrator request. I think that's going to be postponed till the next meeting. Is that correct?
Well, it depends. In next meeting, if our staffing, restaffing provides the revenue to support that direction, by, by the first meeting in June, at the absolute latest.
Okay, but not for tonight?
Not tonight.
Not for tonight. And I anticipate that there will be a non-public session at the end of the, you know, end of the, the meeting tonight. So, with those changes, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I, I just, for me, I just would suggest, I think the strategic plan is a discussion that we have, and it's kind of an ongoing business item, and I really think that we should go ahead with announcements, district reports, and then jump into our discussion about strategic plans. It just seems to make sense to have kind of all these specials each meeting before what we do. I don't know, I just, I'm a little troubled by it. It's, it's kind of strategic plan is what we're doing as a board, let's just have a part of our regular meeting. That's, that's my suggestion. So, I would, I would move to have the strategic plan workshop moved to be after six, after district reports, and it's part of continued, you know, business, ongoing discussions, and we have discussion items, strategic plan first read there.
So, making a motion, are you making a motion to adjust the?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Another discussion on that? I, the intent to put it earlier is because, rather than to have, deal with late, you know, it's, there's a priority to getting that done, that's why it's early.
I get it, but I think, I think we have lots of other stuff. We have the student senate report, we have, you know, an elementary school report, we have other things, and I think to, meeting after meeting, to kind of have these things on top of it, I just don't think that's right. I think we should stick to the structure of our meetings. And it's really not a workshop, it's really, you know, workshop to me is, I think we're all having discussion, and it's kind of open, it's not on TV when we've done workshops, administrators have been at the table, we don't start to vote on something, and here it's even planned to vote for first read. So, it's really not a workshop, it's really a continuing item. That's just how.
Been moved and seconded? So, all in favor of moving the strategic, well, we'll call it a workshop, just for the purpose of the motion, moving that to, so you're having it like, like on Roman numeral seven, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Moving the, our work on the strategic plan to Roman numeral seven, all those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three.
Ready to get those. Okay. Can you, can you, yep, for Laura and I can just leave your hands up in favor, so I can, we can get the Denise, Al, Kenny.
And also student rep.
The student rep is in favor. All those opposed? Three are opposed, okay, it's moved to the discussion item. So, move forward, so, so, I'm sorry, so we've moved the, we've amended the, we've approved the amendment, now can we approve the agenda as amended? Is that?
Did you take a no? You've got the yeses, are we recording the nos?
Three, three nos.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Michael, Tom, and Brian? Thank you.
I think I was moving to approve the agenda with the change being to move the discussion, so I think we took care of.
Is that the understanding of everybody?
That was my understanding.
Okay. Okay. So, the agenda is approved, then. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes for April 17th? Denise?
I will motion to approve the minutes.
Moved by Denise, there's a second, second by Brian. Are there corrections?
Yeah, I have one, but I have to find it. Okay, hold on one second. Okay. So, it is under district, it's down here somewhere. Oh, here we go, district announcements. Suzanne, and this is on page, I think it's on page four. Yeah, it's page four. Suzanne announced that Barb Milliken is a semifinalist for the Teacher of the Year. She also announced that Sean Kelly received the Fitzwater Medallion for contributions to the public discourse, I believe, and so that was left out. So, I'd like to add that in there. And then, under my, Denise Day congratulated Sean Kelly as a per, you know, the award, something like that, just to kind of, that was my reasoning in terms of congratulating him.
Laura, will you read that back to make sure we have it correct?
I have it, actually. It's all, it's all on a piece of paper. She can pass that down.
Are there other corrections?
On, on page five, under discussion items, we did not discuss the convouch case. We tabled, we moved that one off.
Okay. Sorry.
Hearing none, all, if we had a motion to approve the, move, all those in favor of the approving the, the April 17th minutes with those changes, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those minutes are approved.
Who seconded it?
That was my question.
I don't.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, I motioned, but.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Laura.
Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district?
I just wanted, I know some of you were at the ACE presentation this evening, but I just want to acknowledge all of the students and the mentors and the people that, anyone who helped out with the ACE mentoring program. It really is quite amazing to watch the students present and talk about their, their design for the Moheramit front, the architectural, construction, and engineering designs for the front of Moheramit. And I just, I want to publicly thank everybody for that opportunity. They will be returning next year. We've been working, Sean Peschel and I have been working with Brian and Stacy to make, ensure that they do return next year. This was a pilot, so it was a shortened program, and next year it will be a longer program. We're very excited to continue that relationship. I'd also like to just let the board know that we are opening a writing lab in the, at the high school. Kathy Pierce has been working with Emily Crute, who graduated in 2015, and she works at the Writing Center at UNH, and she has been working with Suzie Renner, who is a retired English teacher from the middle school, and they have joined together. It's quite fabulous to, to watch, but they've joined together to train high school, high school students, about 15 of them, that are interested in being trained as, as, for the writing lab. And so, we are going to be piloting that the end of this year, hopefully, or the start of next year, so we're very excited, and that will, that will take place in the library. We'll be looking for a location for them in the library. I'd also like to, I know that Yasmin brought this up last time, but we do have four students that will be traveling with Kathy Pierce to Washington DC to compete in the national competition for History Day, the National History Day competition, and that's really exciting, they're going to be doing that in June, and so we wish them much luck with that. And lastly, I just wanted to let the school board know that Sean Peschel and I went to River Woods, which is in construction, it's supposed to be opening around December, and we visited today, and we met with some of the, some of the, some of the people that are organizing the residents moving in, and different activities and different, different clubs and groups that are going to be there, and we're looking to partner with them and have some students engaged with some of the LNA programming and the culinary programming there, and volunteering at River Woods. So, we're really excited about the opportunities for that. So we're really excited about the opportunities for that, as it's right here, right in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathryn Flore, Director of Student Services. I just wanted to share, Dr. Morse and I received our district determination for implementation of the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, report card, if you will. And we once again scored a zero, which is what we want, is the zero. So we're many years running now with meets requirement. So I did make one hard copy of the report itself and the rubric that the Department of Ed uses. This is the data that they have to turn over to OSEP, the Office of Special Education Programs in DC. And I can have Wendy send out the other pieces, but I just made one copy to save paper.
Would it be possible to have it maybe emailed? Send it to us via email?
Yeah, I can have Wendy email it out to you.
That would be awesome.
But this is, you know, really is great news again. It's, our staff works very hard at staying in compliance with several indicators, both at all levels. And I want to just kind of thank my staff and Andrea and Misty and Lori Grant as well, because preschool is a big part of the indicators as well.
Are you sure it's not an O for outstanding?
That's what it is. O for outstanding. I'll take that.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good evening. Carrie Vash from Astway. I just have one announcement. Our excitement continues with our spring concerts tomorrow night here at Oyster River High School. Our kindergarten concert, one of my favorite events of the year, will start at 6:15, followed by our first and second grade concert at 7:15. So you're all welcome to join. I can tell you, they'll bring smiles to your face. Thanks.
Others from the district? From the board? Denise?
So I attended the community conversation that Suzanne Philippone facilitated at the high school around competency-based assessment and grading and so on and so forth. And it was extremely, I want to congratulate Suzanne for how well she facilitated the conversation. It was a good turnout. I'd say there were probably around maybe 25 people or so, many from the high school, but there were also parents from the middle school. And really had a great interactive conversation and activities. The way it was structured was that there were questions around the room and we had, we were in small groups, moved from question to question and wrote down our thoughts and then came back together as a group to discuss. So it was just, I thought it was a very worthwhile evening, so thank you for that.
I just wanted to comment, when, when Tom opened the meeting and talked about the sad loss of life, and it struck me when he talked about the former student and he said that his wife had the child. And as someone not in education, I always thought I had a teacher. And it struck me just how important teachers are and how we undervalue them. Because from a teacher's perspective, it makes so much sense. They have that kid and they're taking on so much responsibility, meaning, and so much they're trying to work through and accomplish. And I just say that in how much I respect the educators in our district and throughout the country. And I think the way Tom said it just really struck a nerve in me.
I'd like to just mention, like, you know, convale was on the agenda last time, and I think the long court report, the first report from the judge, Judge Ruoff, was in there. My understanding is that he's asking for, you know, he was asking to have some immediate injunction, which would require the state to come up with something like $30 million for these two school systems. And he says, no, I'm not going to do that. But he didn't, he's asked for more information for a different, essentially a different kind of information that the two school districts are going to be supplying, and he's going to be making a judgment in June. And so I think I'd like to go hear just how that's, how that comes out. And then I talked to John Lewis, and he said that if the judge continues that he finds merit, and that he's probably going to open up the legislature to begin to solve that, whether that happens or not. So it's going to be the beginning of a long process, but it has the potential to be like the next Claremont. So this is a, really could be very consequential for everybody. So, so I'd like to go to, you know, in June, when they have the final, when he makes his ruling, or maybe when the information's presented, because I think this is going to be significant stuff. Al?
So I had, I was lucky enough to get to go as a chaperone with the Oyster River High School Orchestra of China. It was a pretty amazing trip. I think all told, between chaperones and kids, there was 70 of us that went. And we trekked across three cities, Shandu, Xi'an, and finally Beijing. The, Dave put together a presentation, he, or a video. He had taken, Matt Renner gave him act, who's the vice president of National Geographic, gave him access to, I think it was like 140 hours of footage, and he culled together a 30-minute video that had national parks and animals from the United States and also China. And then the orchestra actually, like the silent movie, played along with that. And it incorporated the high school Mandarin students, did some narration, which was pretty cool. And then there was also some, some singing that was in Mandarin as well. And at the end of it then, they did like kind of a pop thing, and some of that was also some, some Chinese or some in Mandarin pop songs. So they played, I think the video itself, we did in three different locations, two universities in Shandu, and then at Hanban, which is the headquarters of Confucius Institute in Beijing. In the Shandu setup, there were, it was to a packed house of eight, 900 people we played in front of. The kids were really kind of like rock stars. So it was, I really cannot say enough about the kids. They were really, really, really amazing. I mean, to be able to put all that together and to handle all that, we had a bunch of kids who would never left the United States before, and it was a really big cultural change for them. So I think they did great. The Confucius Institute was very impressed. They've invited us back, they said, so I think, hopefully, we can pull off another trip. The only thing I would disagree with Dave, he said like this is a trip of a lifetime for the kids. And I, I always say a lifetime is a really long time, and I don't think it really is. I think that this is the stepping stone for a lot of kids to go forward and get to see some of the planet. So I think it was a really great opportunity.
Okay. Others? Do we have an assistant superintendent's report? No? Superintendent's report?
I just want to echo Suzanne's presentation on the ACE program. ACE stands for Architecture, Construction, and Engineering. And the value of this program to our district really is phenomenal. The, the fact that we don't have a, you know, a continuing technical education or career technical education program in our high school kind of creates a psychological barrier for our kids, that, you know, these types of programs aren't important. You know, our families are very fixated on four-year liberal arts education, and, and that's been really kind of our niche. But this program is about hands-on learning, and it's not something that traditionally we have been in the forefront of. So I have to say that I'm super honored that our district was the pilot for the state for this program. And the fact that we don't have a career technical program at our high school full-fledged, like Dover does, or Rochester does, or Somersworth does, really speaks to the issue of the interests of our own students in being able to participate in programs like this. So kudos to Suzanne and the mentors and the students who participated, because we just did something groundbreaking for the entire state of New Hampshire. And I don't think that can be underestimated. So thank you Suzanne and your staff, as well as all the students who participated. I was going to talk about enrollment tonight in relation to the kindergarten position, and, you know, the enrollment hasn't abated. I just want to acknowledge that Michael did a, caught an oversight on Sue's and my part, and I do appreciate that, Michael, that you caught it. So we're still in the hiring phase. We have, have been hiring well, and so I anticipate by the time we hit the June 1st, the first meeting in June, we'll be able to have this discussion, because it's really critical when you look at those kindergarten numbers. I also attended a diversity workshop, diversity and inclusion workshop on, on Monday. And I also want to say how proud I am of all of our efforts in Oyster River. And in many ways, I felt like we've been sort of on an island unto ourselves. But, you know, there were 440 participants in this workshop statewide on Monday, dealing with the issue of racism, diversity, and inclusion. And I felt renewed that, you know, the efforts that we've been making in the district aren't the only efforts going on in the state, that we have partners in this work from all, all parts of the state. And the presentations were phenomenal, and basically they're trying to put together, if you will, a manifesto for the state in relation to diversity and inclusion. And we got to see their first draft, and we got to edit that first draft and offer them our thoughts and from our experiences and so forth. The one thing that I also would share with the board is all of these organizations, whether the universities, colleges, school systems, nonprofits, businesses, are all attempting to do one of the same things we're attempting to do, and none of them have it down, which is trying to attract a wide variety of people of color to work across the state of New Hampshire. I actually talked to an agency that theoretically specializes in this work at the conference, and she said straight out that no one has the answer yet, because it's very hard to attract people of color into New Hampshire, Maine, and Vermont, because it's not a traditional location that attracts minorities. So it doesn't mean we should stop, it just means we have to double down our efforts and recognize that it is an uphill battle, and we'll continue to work on it. So that was an amazing workshop, and I was really glad to go. So we ran into a complication on the May 8th workshop that we wanted to have on the middle school. EverSource had booked out our cafeteria for their presentation to the community. So it's not all lost. I have, I've been telling you that I've been working on a list of people, and tonight I even, I think Anita's on the list, but if she's not, I would love her to be, be present. All of the people who have worked on district committees over the course of the seven and a half years I've been here, people who have worked on late start committees, people who have worked on, you know, all-day kindergarten, people have worked on various construction projects, the first people who helped me create the first strategic plan. I had Wendy go through and build that list of people who have been advocates over these last, over my tenure as superintendent, who have supported me and, and supported the district with untold number of hours, construction committees, you know, we've had so much work done in the last seven and a half years. So I've invited them, or in the process of inviting them, to a dedicated dinner, and I would love it if board members could be present as well, to talk about the middle school and to talk about how they can help us one more time, bring this, this particular project to the finish line in March with, with support from the voters. So that, that's in the works right now. And then, the last thing I would say is, you know, I am in the process of setting up meetings with each and every middle school teacher, that I will meet with them on Monday afternoon, and I will have a personal conversation with each person. I just want to make sure the board knows that that's in process. Those are my reports tonight. Tom, thank you.
So for May 8th then, will there be any even brief sort of announcement prior to the concert? Or what's happening?
Yes. So, yeah. Andrea is more than willing to let the world know that we have the recital hall built into the, the middle school. It just won't include the big supper event that I was hoping to have for that night. There'll be other opportunities for me to talk directly to parents of musicians. And so I just was bummed out that EverSource trumped us. I guess it's been in the books for a while, and when we ask for the room, that's when we find out.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Business administrator? No? Yasmin?
So students are adjusting to coming back from break. So, but to start things off, AP testing starts next week.
Excuse me, could you talk more directly into your mic, please? Thank you.
AP testing starts next week, as well as we're getting our SAT scores back tomorrow for the juniors who took the SATs on April 9th. And there are a lot of field trips from the World Language Department, as well as Citizen Education and Earth, Ocean, and Space. The World Language Honor Society induction is tomorrow for people who maintained an A- minus throughout their World Language classes. And the Senior Scholars Fisher Cat Game Field Trip is coming up for those who want to attend. And lastly, a lot of people are excited for the prom, which is happening on May 10th, on Friday, from 7:00 to 11:00 PM at the Red Barn, which I think is in South Berwick, Maine. And that's all I have.
Can I piggyback Yasmin, Tom? So, you know, Al talked about the awesome experience that the students, the orchestra students have had going to China. And Andrea Von Owen is proposing a international trip to England, Wales, and Scotland for our strings students. And she's doing, this is what's unique about this, this would be in conjunction with a partnership with UNH. Their strings students and our strings students would be going on this field trip together. If you know Andrea, she's an incredibly detailed person, and she built this three-page, double-sided memorandum of understanding in terms of how this trip would occur and how we're going to keep the two groups separate when it's appropriate and bring them together when it's appropriate. And you can imagine just the management of that. So I, I do want to say, this is an incredible opportunity, and the board has asked me always to report on field trips. They'll be doing fundraising and so forth to make sure that all youngsters who want to go can go.
What is the timeframe? Are they, are they considering?
The end of May, right Suzanne? Last week in May.
Next year, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Of this year? Next year?
Next, next school year. Sorry. A year from May.
Yeah.
Okay. So move on to strategic plan. So you have a ton of paper in front of you, which is exactly duplicating what you had on as backup for the meeting. So I thought what I would do is to go through it section by section. If people have, you know, changes, like most of the changes that have been indicated and made, if there's still changes to be made, you know, just note those. If there are no changes to be made, we'll just move on to the next section. Okay? If I start working like a freight train and go too fast, just slow me down. But, you know, it'd be great if we could get through this tonight. So if we start with the staffing, strategic staffing breakdown, Denise?
So the only thing, and this is actually the only thing that I saw, was that the 50,000 part-time communication person is still listed under year one on the first page. It's been taken out as far as the board goal, but the position is still listed there. So I would say to take that out.
Thank you Denise.
Others? Other changes on the strategic plan staffing breakdown?
Just to kind of, to understand the process too, so we have all these different sections. And I think Al even made a point last meeting about, there was a section he was very concerned about. Do you see us voting for the overall plan and also voting on each individual section?
No, no. I think that when we get through here, we just, we would vote on the whole overall plan, because it's all interconnected.
It is interconnected, but in a way it gives us a chance to... It is interconnected, but in a way it gives us a chance to be able to support the overall plan but disagree on a section. This is what I'm saying, that's, Tom, okay, either way, I just raised that because...
It's up to you guys how you want to proceed.
I just think I just opened it up to just so many different votes.
Okay.
All right. And I think that if there's something that you disagree with, we're still going to have another crack at it, kind of wouldn't...
Yeah, this is strictly a first read, it's still first read, it's not embedded in stone until you do the second read, so when we get to that section, if there's something that you strongly have concerns about, Kenny, we should say it when we hit that section, and then we'll note it.
Right, and I, maybe this is the time, I just, I think I'm in the minority, and I don't think we need to discuss it again, but I don't think we're moving forward with the World Language in the way that the world expects of our kids, in the way certainly our district parents think, but I think we discussed it already, and I just wanted to put that down there, I think we could be...
So you're not disagreeing with the goal, you're just disagreeing with the aggressiveness of the goal?
Exactly. I think we should be firmer on implementation.
So I guess the only other thing I would comment on that, on the summary here, is the technology integrator. That position is, is that in the budget that was already approved?
No.
You're right.
No, so I'm waiting, like the kindergarten position, I'm waiting until I can, can I put my finger on the money so I can say to you, we can approve the kindergarten position because we have the money, we can improve the integrator because we have the money.
Right, so that's a little bit of a complication about the year-one goals in general here because our budget is already approved, and we don't have that upside flexibility there very easily.
Well, I consider the whole thing flexible based on, you know, a vote of the board. We don't create any positions without a majority vote of the board, so the fact that it's here doesn't mean it's done, it's just where I would, I would recommend it be.
Right.
And that if the money materializes and you support it, then it gets done. If the money doesn't materialize, then it just moves into the next year until there's a consensus, majority consensus. So I think that's true of the entire plan, you know, as we've said many times, you know, the first years you feel really confident about, but as you move out into the second, third and fourth and fifth years, you're constantly going to be adjustment, and I love the analogy that it's a roadmap, but we may be putting down a dirt road or paved road or cobblestone road based on, you know, what we have for resources at any given point in time.
And I'll just throw one thing on that with it, because it's like the technology integrator, we have it in 50,000 in fiscal 2020, and then fiscal 2021, it's 50,000. And I think email that you talked about, about the technology, I think technology integrator kind of sums it up. There's, it's a unique situation in which you have a staff member who's trying to keep their foot into teaching and also then do technology integration. But I think when I look at fiscal 2021, it's kind of like, it gives you some flexibility in case you decide to become the full-time technology integrator, or if she's not going to be the technology integrator. So I think that it's, there's a lot of flexibility, I think, in there.
So is this okay? Can we move on? Okay, you have Maslow and Maharmit, are there changes to that? I don't think we did much with this, really.
No, there was, it seemed like it's been hashed over several times by the board, and it's never come to the forefront of any major changes.
You okay to go? I don't want to rush anybody, but are we okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Middle school? The changes I request are fine, the ratification of the common exam, that was, that's been taken out, so that's clean.
Yeah.
Changes to middle school? Hearing none? Move on? High school? I don't think we had too much for this. Okay, are we okay with this?
I think the one thing that I raised at last meeting, and it seemed to get some consensus, is that we were going to be reflective about kind of the cell and the MTSS, not just backloaded, but front-load that and get input from students. So I think this is...
That's what I tried to capture, Ken, in blue.
And continuous review process that involves staff and students?
Rather than put it in each box, I thought the way that you worded it made sense for it to be continuous.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I was just putting the box in.
Well, because I didn't put it in the box, Ken.
I didn't see that, okay.
No, that's fine.
That's great, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Other changes to the high school? Move on?
So we're at the district?
School district.
School district.
In the vein of Kenny's comments on World Language, I disagree with the removal of the communication goal, I think that's, I understand we're going to take it on as a tactical year-by-year thing, but it's a, it's a challenge for us as a district, it has been a challenge, and I think it merits inclusion in the five-year roadmap. That's my, that's my two cents.
So, Michael, my intent would be to bring that back to you under your board goal, I just would lift this and then take kind of the comments that Al has made and bring it back as, so it doesn't disappear completely. Okay.
Yeah, it seemed to me there's disagreement that we might hash out later. You got to hire somebody, is it going to be hiring, is this, you know, some other kind of action, is it consult, you know, how are we going to? So I don't think we're going to drop it, but whether, you know, so would that be okay?
I wish it was in the strat plan, I said my, I said my piece.
Okay.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, I mean, I'm just trying to think of the best way, I think that in terms of, because this is a long list, I think the discussion about this position, it needs to be more robust. I just, so I'll just leave it at that.
Denise?
So I just have, I'm a little confused by the sustainability, sustainability education looks fine. When it comes, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on, I'm under, we're still on school district, I'm under the, all right, communications got crossed out, under...
Do we move on from the high school?
Yes, yeah, we're working in the district.
I thought Michael had a high school.
Oh, no, no, that was...
Well, they're sort of reflected in both, is what it is, kind of.
Because I had a thing on the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The civic bar high school.
Okay.
And it was kind of in, maybe it pertains to kind of, kind of a sentiment that was rising through the community. In the competency-based education, and in the third box, it's implement ORH, grading and reporting system to reflect competency-based education and have an evaluation of CBE by parents, students and staff. I don't know if we want something to reflect that, that that decision to go to CBE isn't a done deal.
Right.
It is, because the way it's worded almost seems like it's a little bit of a done deal.
The way that we've worked around that in the other goals was to consider, put the word considerate instead of implement, because there's going to be a lot of, a lot of community conversations before we get to implement.
I was thinking we could add something like fully weighing the positives and negatives, or the pluses and minuses of moving through that, and, but I think that would be, I think that's something we should really state that we are going to get community input for that and not just move on that from us as a board.
Absolutely, yeah.
So if we're going to add that consideration, I think that should move forward a year into 2020, 2021, so that whatever comes out of that consideration process could be implemented in fiscal year '22.
Makes sense.
But I'm concerned that if in 2021, staff are basically still in the development phase, so they're, they're still developing what, I don't know if that's rushing it, I guess.
No, I would say that, you know, that the staff is having this conversation, and Suzanne, you can certainly come to the podium, but it seems to me that we would be jumping too quickly from the staff work into implementation without a step with, in terms of communication with the community. So I, what I'm hearing from you also, when we've talked about it, is that we need to have a lot of community conversation. So do you think that that makes sense in terms of '21, '22 being the community conversation and then consideration of implementation in '22, '23?
Um, just in my opinion, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think, yes, I would agree with that.
So that, that, that's a good catch, Kenny, a community conversation in '21, '22, and then consideration of implementation in '22, '23.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're still, in parallel with that, in the earlier years, incorporate structured competencies within classes.
Yes.
We're just not using them for grading.
Correct.
Is that...
That's correct.
Yeah, so the faculty this, this year, the faculty has been working on how to merge the two, and that work will continue next year as well, because there are a lot of challenges with merging competencies and current grading practices, and so we will continue to do that while we're having that conversation about grading. And then, and then the conversation that I had last week was the start, was a philosophical conversation around the purpose of grading, why we grade, and so that will continue as well, that type of conversation needs to continue with, with the community as well.
I think that's your biggest challenge, actually.
Absolutely.
That you're implementing a significant behavioral change, at least for parents, and I think the feedback is really overwhelming right now compared to parent, at least I've heard it, it was, so I think that upfront, you need to kind of make, clarify at least to the public that where it stands in the strategic plan is a couple of years out, because there's concern that we're going to implement it right away.
Yeah.
And then how it all fits together, I think there's an awful lot of work to be done.
Yes.
And just so you know, Suzanne, that whole group of parents that came were completely under the misconception that we were going to implement competency-based grading next year, and I assured them that we would provide ample conversation with the community before we ever got to that place, and they were relieved, but they were basing it on the rumor mills in, in the community, kind of basing on what Al was saying.
Yeah.
So we just have to be super clear with the community that this is a consideration for several years from now and not anything that's immediate, because you have so much work to do with your staff and so many conversations to have with the community, that, so we need to just kind of make sure the world is hearing as clearly as possible that, that it's not next year, and in this case, as we're looking at it, it's not even the year after, but that they will be engaged in the conversation.
Yes.
That's what they were concerned about, they thought it was happening next year.
Yes, and I encourage, if, if parents have questions about what the high school's doing in regards to grading and competencies, I encourage them to reach out to me, and I'm happy to have a conversation with them as well.
Yeah, and I did the same thing, but sometimes Facebook has a life of its own, and we don't control that, and other social media, you know, because they, I asked them who gave them that information, and they said they just read it on Facebook, and I said, well, if we're going to have that kind of conversation, you'd hear it from me, you'd hear it from the principal, and that conversation isn't happening yet because we're not ready.
Yeah, I hate to say, you're going to have to start building that out on your high school website to begin to have information, like there should have been, like, even if you have 25 people, there's like 800 kids at the high school, so the beginning of that conversation that you have, you need to build out on your website so that people can do it, and then use social media to kind of spread it, not the fake news, but the real news, so that, there's nothing there right now, and that lends itself to like suspicion and rumor, and so getting on top of that and putting together a, you can build on it if you keep going forward, but that really needs to be built out now.
Okay.
So, so are we saying in '21, '22, essentially engage the community in...
Exactly.
...the theories of grading and...
And discussion.
Discussion of competency-based grading.
Yep, and Suzanne and I will rewrite these for the round...
I think that has to happen really with the faculty first, and so I think that's where we are right now with the faculty this year and next year, is having that conversation, and so I don't, I don't think we're ready to have that conversation because we don't know what it looks like yet.
Right.
So that, that sequence will be corrected in the next...
Yep, yep, it'll be in round two.
Can you just say that again, Tom, with the...
Well, I thought, I thought you were going to engage the communities, you know, engage a community in discussions of competency-based, competency-based education and competency-based grading or something.
Right.
In '21, '22.
'21, '22.
Twenty-two.
And then we're moving the implement item to the following year.
And we're writing the word consider in front of it, so it'll be as is in '22, '23, but with the word consider in front of it, so consider implementation.
I really don't like that wording.
What?
No, no, I love your, I love what you said, Tom.
Okay.
I don't like the consider implementation, because to me, considering implementation is what you do before you implement, and that's, so that's what we're doing in '21, '22. However that comes out of that process, it's, we don't know what that's going to look like at this point, but whatever does come out of that process, that's what we want to implement in '22, '23. If we're still considering in '22, '23, then we're not implementing in '22, '23, we're not...
How about recommendation?
Implement recommendations?
Well, I was going to say, make recommendations to the school board for implementation, because what we were trying to do was get away from, I mean, this is what my understanding is from our previous conversations, is try to avoid forcing the board into a position several years down the road that may not be what the board wants to do several years down the road.
That's always a risk with a strategic plan.
Exactly, but the...
If we don't do that, there's no value in having a strategic plan, we might as well just stop, and if we're not going to do anything with this, we're just going to talk for five years.
But that's why it's a living document, because if the board, for some reason, three years from now is totally different and wants to change course, this isn't a law that, you know, people could make revisions.
Right.
But I agree with Michael, I think the word considers...
Too soft?
Too, well, it's too, it's, well, I think it's too heavy because it applies, we're going to implement, and I would back down.
How about, how about the administration makes recommendations?
Yeah.
Because that's definitive.
Yeah, I think...
So I think that should happen in '21, '22.
The make recommendations.
So we have this year of discernment with the community, and then recommendations from the administration at the end of that.
Concurrently, do it, do the conversations and then be ready to make recommendations, is what you're saying, in the same year?
Yeah.
And then implementation, if there is an implementation, it would be in '22, '23.
Yes.
And so that, all the "and" stuff has to change. And I think the other interesting part of it is, I don't think the problem for anybody is to have competency-based kind of criteria, but, but there's also, there's difference between grading and learning.
Absolutely.
And that's, so I think that's the real big struggle here.
Right.
Is, and I think we could advocate very well a case for why that's a much better way to learn, but the cell, if we choose to sell, is going to be how we tie grading to that.
I think, I think the bigger struggle, the struggle isn't so much the competency, the struggle is that it's a new system, and so parents, what they're thinking is, does that disadvantage my students?
Exactly.
And so that's, that's the fear factor. So I think, you know, as to what Michael is saying, is like, if you do, hopefully, we're coming up with the hybrid, whatever the system is going to be, we've done as we work through it, and then we've solved that problem, and we're going to implement what we thought was the best mechanism.
Right, right, and I think the reason that that works is that we'll have spent the next two school years thinking through what that means from a school district perspective, from a, from a professional perspective, and then I'm expecting that in, in the fall of 2021, we start to have those community conversations, that the administration and the faculty already have given a lot of thought to that, so.
Right.
So you're not coming out there with this open-ended question to the community of, correct, how should we do this? It's, here's what we're thinking, what do you think? And then that's going to evolve over the course of that year, kind of like, kind of like the discussions around the middle school design are happening this year.
Or even like more, it should come around like how we did the change in the structure of the high school day, the, they spent a year kind of coming up with what, what it looked like.
Yeah.
And then they presented what it looked like, and then, and then that's how we did it. So I mean, I think that's kind of...
I think, I think I've captured it, I just want to do it one more time, so when we make the changes, we're all on the same page, so using Tom's, engage the community in conversations about competency-based grading, and by the end of that year, the administration will make recommendations for board consideration. Following year, we take the language... Following year, we take the language that says "implement," assuming the board has supported it. And so, we take what's there already around "implement" and put it in 22, 23. That all works strategically, if it works for the seven of you.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, okay. Suzanne, you and I will just restructure that language together.
Is there more on the high school?
Kenny can't go backwards ever again.
Okay, so then, getting back to my question on, so, on the school district, as I was saying, so, I'm fine with sustainability education, but then, the next page, when we come to sustainability operations?
Yeah.
It talks about the sustainability coordinator, and then, the sustainability integrator. And I'm confused about the stipend positions and like what we're calling what. So, I guess I just need some clarification around that.
So, again, we're not proposing a new position here. Yeah, so this is, so we broke the, I just got the nod from Susan, because we did this together. So, we broke the sustainability piece into two distinct pieces, education and the operations. And so, the people that will be involved in, what we were trying to do in that first one, Denise, is make sure that Todd's end of the world and Susan's end of the world were talking to each other. So, what's happening in, with the coordinators, and what's happening with, within facilities and transportation, that there's a place where there's a bridge for that conversation. So, we're trying to marry all the people who are involved in sustainability in that first block to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing.
Well, I guess it's the titles that I'm confused about, because currently, because I understand, if we go back and we look at it under sustainability education, and it says, "The remaining sustainability coordinator will assist the superintendent and administrator in developing a job description and transition plan." That makes sense. I follow that, that's exactly what we've been saying.
Yeah.
And then, underneath that, that will create a plan for, oh, that should be a "how," sustainability integra, so are we calling this stipend positions at that point, sustainability integrator? That's what I'm confused about, or who is a sustainability integrator?
Right, so, we're transitioning from having a dedicated green team
Right.
to having one person in that position, plus the educator coordinators, the stipended positions, that one last green team position will phase out in year three. So, we're using half the money to support the sustainability stipends, and keeping half the money to maintain the current structure. And that actually was sort of based on the feedback at the last meeting from Al, where he, I felt like we were trying to, at least, I mean, Al can talk for himself, but I thought he was trying to get me to think about how both halves meet.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I kind of, I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying, I guess what we should really call is faculty sustainability coordinator or something like that, because you're trying to, you're trying to transition from the green team to embed it into the faculty.
Correct.
Once it's embedded in the faculty, in theory, it should be easier than to do the operational part. So, I think, you know, that's how I took it, at least.
So
And that is the intent, so clearly, you know, Denise's question raises a good point, so if the intent is not clear, then we need to clarify what exactly we're trying to do here.
Because you also call it, which makes sense, under sustainability education, you're calling them teacher leaders, which makes perfect sense. So, I don't know if you're, when you start talking about the sustainability integrator, that's not the teacher leaders, that's the, that's this position that still is going to stay there.
Why don't you just call it the green team?
Well, that's, that's what I was, as you were talking, Denise, I was just taking notes like we did in the previous one, in trying to make it super crystal clear what we're saying. The remaining green team coordinator will work with the teacher leaders
Okay.
to support. That's what we were attempting to say, and we did it poorly, so it's a good catch we'll work with, and we'll rework that for the second read.
Okay.
And by the end, we're not going to have a sustainability coordinator, we're going to have a sustainability integrator?
In the end, what we're going to have is a group of educators at each level who have taken on the role of green team coordinators for their grade levels. And those people will be working with a sustainability committee, as well as Sue's staff, the facilities director, and transportation director, and food service director. So, even though we were asked to split it, education and operations, the reality is, if we're going to have an effective sustainability plan, we have to bring them together at some point, so that they're on the same page, working on similar issues, or working on issues that make sense for that given year.
And so, those are, we'll identify current staff members.
Yes.
Who will do that role. Who is going to head that up?
Todd and Sue, as the administrative leaders.
So, we're not going to have, beyond that structure, we don't envision having a person whose title is sustainable
Not at this point.
Okay.
Okay, so then, that will fade out, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's my point.
I mean, really
So, I think it just needs to be clearer, I think, that that's what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, it goes in line with what you're doing with all your curricular stipends anyway, because you're creating a leadership position that's focused on one topic. Your sustainability is just following that same model, right?
Yes.
So, in a way, we're bringing it in-house?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Should we get that clarification?
Yep, and well, like I did with Suzanne, I'll bring Sue and Todd, and we'll clean that up, so it's easier to read.
Okay, and I have two things. That first page of school district, again, that mental health, could we add that language that you had added before when we talked about that, that implement continuous review process?
Oh, sure, yeah, thank you.
That whole, kind of caught it.
Yeah.
Do that.
All right.
I'm sorry?
Right, he wants it to go across the whole five years.
MTS S cell, mental health, kind of just like the other thing. And the other thing, and too, and I hate to be the broken record, and I know I'm tiresome, but again, all I see with transportation is electric buses, and again, I just, I mean, every day, the car's backed up at the middle school, and the car's backed up at the high school, and we're talking about sustainability, and every single one of those cars, their motor is running, the person sitting in the car is on their phone. To me, it speaks that our transportation system isn't working for a lot of people. And not only is it not working, it's environmentally horrible. And I wish we would take a look at transportation.
Kenny, does that
I'm a broken record, but it's, it just bugs me crazy.
Yeah, maybe that makes sense, is another one of those places where the seven of you talk about making that a board goal, and then have it out there, like on communications, as opposed to here? Because right now, there isn't a consensus, but the conversation could result in consensus.
I don't, and again, if I'm the only one who feels that it's not a good thing that we're doing, I'm fine being minority. I just wanted to raise it, and I don't care where it happens, but I think it's overdue that we looked at that.
I guess I don't disagree with that being a challenge. I think it needs more investigation as to what we would put into a strategic plan, so.
We have no, we have no data, and all I wanted to do is study it. That's, all I would ask is just to study it. We have no idea what the conclusion will be.
I mean, I would, I hate to belabor this, but hopefully, if we do it right, and you form faculty members that are doing the sustainability, that they'll reach out to a broader group of students, and then we can affect change. I think the problem we have right now is, you know, whether it be idling, or plastics, or anything else, we just don't, the system is kind of clunky, and we can't reach out to enough kids to actually facilitate.
I agree, Al, but you know, I don't remember, was it two, three years ago, and I think Lawrence Selig's child was very involved with it. If you walk down this road to our middle school, there's two different signs that says "no idling."
Those are long, they're careless.
Right? The students were involved in it, they were the ones who brought that up, and it's like, it doesn't happen, you know, and it repeats, I mean, try to get to the SAU office at 10 after 3:00 or 3:15, coming from that part of town, you can't. You know, it's, it backs up onto Baghdad Road down there, and you can't even get, if you're going on Baghdad Road, you can't get down to where you want to get on Route 4. And it just, to me, it seems, maybe there's not, but I just feel there might be a better way, that's all.
And I don't disagree that, you know, cars idling, I definitely have an issue with that as well, but I think the new middle school, if nothing else, will help the traffic issue, and so perhaps, once we have the new middle school, and we sort of have a better traffic flow, and then perhaps looking at, you know, the bigger picture of the transportation or what have you, but
I agree, but it's not just the traffic flow.
It does here, too, the high school.
Whether they're idling, I mean
Right.
They're idling on Dennison, and they're not blocking traffic, it's, think of all that carbon, it's
Well, they're idling out here on Co-Drive.
Absolutely.
It's an amazing amount of carbon.
So, you know, I think it's, you know, I've said this before, and I'm also probably repeating myself, so I apologize, but it's a bigger issue than transportation. It's, and going back to something Al usually says, it's changing community practice. And it may not be that the transportation system is broken, it just may be that parents want to take their kids to school in the morning, because it's a one-on-one situation where they get to talk to them and so forth. So, it may be, it may be as benign as that, as opposed to having the transportation system be broken, but, you know, I think at some point, we should, you know, hire outside consultant to look at the transportation system and see whether there's anything we could be, could doing, because, you know, we are in the forest, and we're seeing the trees right up close. And so, you know, an outside person gives us that opportunity.
And maybe one smaller step might be just if we could develop a survey to see what it would take for, I mean, kind of the issue is like, what would it take for you to take public transportation? What would it take, you know?
Are there any circumstances under which you would
Do it.
Yes, because if the answer is no, then it doesn't matter what we do.
Could we maybe just as a step, find a way to carefully ask that question?
Right.
And that might be a step towards seeing what it would, you know, is the fact that, you know, I can get there in 10 minutes, there's no way a bus is going to get my kid there in 10 minutes, you know, so.
Or Jim's thing, I just love the one-on-one time with my kid back and forth, and we're not going to change that.
We're not going to change.
Right, I agree.
So, maybe, put it off as, you know, I mean, I don't mean to put it off in terms of action, but put it off the, because we're not sure what we want to do.
Perfect. Maybe the, maybe we should be taking a queue from London, and the town should consider congestion pricing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be interesting.
Let's do the plastic bags, let's do with the plastic bags first.
That could be your campaign promise.
My thought was to get tourists involved, but think of how many tickets you can write for people on their cell with the car idling, because that breaks New Hampshire law.
Be a great revenue source.
All right, let's move on.
Did you plan district equity and inclusion? Changes?
I thought this was excellent, and I appreciate it.
I hope that you're seeing the passion, because I am so very proud of our faculty and administration for keeping this issue in the forefront, and we have tons and tons of work to do here.
Okay. Operations, facilities? Changes? Hearing that, can we move on? Operations, informational technology?
Just as an aside while you're looking at this, I just want to share with you, earlier I shared with you that Josh and his IT coordinators, a small group of them, had been working with the statewide agenda to try to get districts to work together, which is exactly opposite of how New Hampshire works. As of today, total number of students participating is over 56,000.
Oh, wow.
So, the last six weeks, we've been able to get that many districts with that many students to commit to working together.
Wow.
And we're still not done, so kudos to Josh for, and his IT peers from Concord and other areas, Pelham and so forth, they'd really knocked it out of the park. And so, it is not true that New Hampshire can't work collaboratively, because we just proved they can.
Kudos to Josh. Are there changes to the operations informational technology? Hearing that, okay. School nutrition? Any changes here? Hearing that, let's move on. Transportation?
Is the bus item double-booked here, then? Because it was a line on the district summary page.
That's right, that's why I picked up on it.
That was under the sustainability piece.
Oh, okay, that's why it was there also, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Changes here? Done?
That does it, right?
It does.
Did you skip world language, or?
Skip what?
Which, Michael?
Was there a world language?
Yeah, we talked about world language.
We did, okay.
So, I wonder if we have a motion to approve this as a first read? Does that make sense, Brian?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Brian, is there a second? Second by Michael. All in favor? Seven in favor. Okay, it's approved as a first read.
Congratulations.
Good step.
We'll have all those changes ready for the next meeting.
Okay, although it's not quite nine, I wonder if we could take a break, five minutes right now, and then go into the rest of the, rest of the meeting, okay?
So, I'll just say that before we go into, and then we're into motion.
You're saying this, watching this issue.
So, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Okay, before we get into the actions, Denise, something that you want to say just about what we get, we'll get in the paper.
Yeah, so the suggestion is, is that in terms of the revisions to the strategic plan, everything goes online, on our online packet, but then print out only the pages with change, if everyone's okay with that?
Will do. Thank you for that suggestion.
It's very sustainable.
Very sustainable, yes.
The pile on top of my piano is getting really heated up.
1:35?
They take it to Lee, Teresa.
Could I have a motion to nominate the Mohairat School Nurse? Denise?
I'll make a motion to nominate the Mohairat School Nurse.
By Denise, is her second, second by Brian. Discussion on this? All in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor. Motion passes. A motion to nominate the middle school nurse? Denise?
I'll make a motion to nominate the presented middle school nurse.
Moved by Denise, is her second, by Brian. Discussion?
I just have a question and just, just maybe to information. So, in the education part, it projects when this particular candidate might have her BSN, and then it also says must complete BSN within DOE requirements.
Right.
So, is our district setting a, the deadline from the state, or are we using a deadline that perhaps we've used for other people?
Deadline from the state now because the law is pretty clear, and then if, so this actually addresses another question that Michael asked me earlier about other positions. The state provides alternative pathways for people to get certified. They particularly know that in the nursing field, their expectation that people would have a BSN coming in the door is unrealistic because so many nurses, as you know, can got two-year degrees, but in order to stay in the position, our successful candidate would have to get a BSN.
Okay.
Yeah, state guidelines.
And I think the state guideline is six years?
Yeah.
I think is what that is, okay.
Okay. We're going to vote on this one? All those in favor of the nomination for the Oyster Room Middle School Nurse, raise your hand. Seven in favor, nomination is approved. So, policies, Denise, I don't choose these?
Sure. So, the minutes from the last policy committee meeting kind of explain the rationale for some of the changes specific to policy JLI, student automobile use. The form was actually embedded in policy, and as you know, we usually do a form as an R document, so the revision is basically taking that form out of the actual policy. It'll become an R document, and then there were, I think, some changes, a few changes to the actual, like, the policy part of it. I don't know if there's other questions about any of the other changes related to those policies.
I was, I don't know if I was here when you discussed the search of automobiles?
We haven't discussed it at all.
They haven't? Okay. Is that for first read, is that?
Yes.
This is first read, right, because it was on the agenda, and we took it out of the agenda.
Okay. So, my question is, like, and maybe this is for Suzanne, if somebody has a weapon or drug paraphernalia or drugs on their car, that's, those are all crimes?
Yes.
Those are all crimes. And I would think if somebody's committed a crime, then you gather the evidence, which is a technical, so I'm wondering, under what's, it would seem to be under almost any circumstance where you sus, I'm just talking, under any circumstance where you suspect the students of committing a crime, is the principal the person who should be looking into the car, or is that, or should that be, you know, something where you were calling in the police officer? Because, I mean, I would think that in terms of gathering evidence, that's a technical skill that a police officer.
Right, so, if I may, yeah, so there's two levels to, this is the conversation that we got into at the committee level as well. There's two levels to intervention. One is based on Suzanne's judgment, and the other one is, would be based on police judgment. So, for Suzanne, her standard is reasonable suspicion, and for the police, it's probable cause. Those are two different legal bases for decision-making. So, if Suzanne has reasonable suspicion, like opening a locker or going to a car that something untoward is happening, she, she can do that, but if, if she feels that reasonable suspicion is leading to something dangerous, like possession of firearm, she can just simply say, "I have rumors out there that so-and-so has a gun in their car or a gun in their locker, and I think this goes beyond, you know, my, my skill set and turns it over to the police department." But, you know, in order for our police department to do anything, they have to have probable cause. So, there's two completely different standards, which is why the principals involved before the police officers involved, although Suzanne, at her discretion at any moment, can say, "I think this rises to the level of the police department. I'm not, I'm not feeling comfortable or safe dealing with this issue." And so, it goes from there. So, it's, there's, there's two different things going on. I did check with a couple of chiefs, Kenny, as a result of our conversation, and the chiefs that I talked to said, "Absolutely, keep the reasonable suspicion. It's the best and easiest way for intervention, but at any point that your principal feels unsafe, she should turn it over to the police."
So, if she goes into a car, finds drug paraphernalia, which is illegal, is she obligated? Are you obligated to turn that over to the police?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. If you, just one other question. If you have a suspicion and you, you know, search a car, do you have a responsibility to tell the person whose car you searched that you searched the car?
So, typically, what we do is we notify the owner of the car.
Uh huh.
And so, that is typically a parent that owns the car. The students, we don't search cars without the students there, so we wouldn't go into a car without knowledge of the student or the owner of the car that we are, that we are doing a search of a car.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think the point, Tom, that you just elicited is, one of the reasons I didn't support this at policy and won't support it now, because you just asked, and Dr. Morse, you provided the explanation with the different criteria that Suzanne would use to search a car, and that the police would search a car. And then the answer to Tom's question is then Suzanne finds something that's illegal, then it goes to the police. So, here we put this student in jeopardy for a lesser criteria than the legal system usually would use, because the police have a higher standard to decide they're going to search a car, and here Suzanne's searching it with less suspicion, maybe not suspicion, but less firm data, but then it gets turned over to the police, so it quickly escalates for less reason. I also don't support it because even though the maybe constitutional law supports it, I think in this day and age, driving a car to school and parking on Code Drive shouldn't take away someone's rights, and I think that we're subjecting them to a search for a lesser standard is taking that away. I also, for, I think, Tom, what you were alluding to, no offense, Suzanne, but you're not trained to search cars, and there's a way you handle evidence. So, let's say you find evidence, is that search tainted by the way you handled evidence? And then the other thing is, let's say you get yourself into a situation you had no anticipation of, so you think some student might have, you know, a little bit of marijuana in the car, that's a criteria, and then you open it and there's a bomb, and all of a sudden, that bomb goes off. And I think you're putting yourself, although it's probably far-fetched, I just think, I think searching cars is not what we should have teachers do or administrators do. I think a search should be done under legal basis, and it should be done by people who are trained to do searches. And I understand, one of the things is we want to keep kids out of the legal system, but then we just heard, "You're going to find drug paraphernalia and you're going to inform the police," so we're not, the whole reason for, for doing this policy seems to be undermined by what we do when we find something with a search. So, I'm, I never voted against policies before, but I really think this is wrong on so many levels.
Okay, quick question. Suzanne, how many cars have you searched this year?
There was one car searched this year, and it actually wasn't me that searched it. It was Officer Malaski that searched the car because she, the police did, so if the police get information, it doesn't go through the school, then, then she acts as, as arm of the police department. So, the school has not actually had a car search this year. The car searches are not typical.
It's not, it's not an everyday or...
No, it is not.
Not the currents for that matter.
Excuse me?
It's not, it's not a regular matter that happens in this district.
No, searches aren't regular, any search isn't regular, and it's not, and I just, I would like to say that we, we, that is one of the, that is one of the things that I do not like doing. So, we don't, we don't pull kids in to search their bags or their person or their car because of rumor or hearsay. It has to, it has to be something substantial for us to do that. And parents are notified, we have conversations with the kids, a lot of times the kids are involved with it, so we, and I've been trained on how to search bags and search, when I was at Spalding High School, we were trained for that, how to search, you know, hats and belts and all kinds of different things like that. And it's, it's so, I don't, it's not something that we take lightly, and I don't want you to feel that this is something that we do regularly, and it has to be substantial for us to do that.
And I appreciate that, and, and I think to, Brian, to your point, the, the issue to me is the policy, and this policy is going to be here if Suzanne leaves in two years, and we don't know who's going to take Suzanne's place, and if Dr. Morse leaves in three or four years, and we don't know who's going to take Dr. Morse's place. And people have different benths and different placidities, and I think that these two individuals are incredibly sensitive and really respect people's rights, but it doesn't mean we're always going to have a school board that aligns with our thinking, and certainly not a principal or superintendent. So, policies are really written to get beyond personality. It's to make something that, a standard that everyone is held to.
I think you're, it sounds like you're borrowing tomorrow's troubles. We don't, we're looking, we're a solution looking for a problem.
No.
It's what it is, and the, and the policy can always be changed if that's an issue.
I also would like to say...
Denise had the floor.
Sure. So, just, just my, my one quick point, and this is what I argued in policy, is if Suzanne has a reasonable suspicion that somebody has a weapon in their car, we want her to be able to find that weapon. We don't want to wait until it rises to a level of probable cause in that situation. Plus, I don't even think with the whole mess with the guns in school thing that it would be illegal, so it wouldn't be a police matter, but we'd want to know if a student had a gun in their car, or a weapon of some sort. So, that was my argument at the policy committee meeting, was that we want situations where we, we can't just throw up our hands and say, "Oh, well, we can't do anything about this because it doesn't rise to the level of probable cause." So, that was my argument. That's all I want to say.
So, can I, can I just ask, what, so, Dr. Morse, earlier you mentioned the, the standard essentially for the, for a principal is reasonable suspicion, for the police it's probable cause. With the current policy, what, what is it that we can't do that we want to be able to do?
Well, the current policy maintains the standard of reasonable suspicion. If you take that out, then, as Denise just alluded to, then the only standard that exists will be the police, a police standard which is probable cause. That is a very high standard for, for law enforcement, and, you know, if we talk about tomorrow's issues, and tomorrow's issues is we, we have reasonable suspicion that there's a gun in somebody's car, that doesn't rise to the level of probable cause. And so, that gun could be sitting in that car and not being accessed. So, it's an, it's an issue of, of degree. I don't disagree with Kenny in terms of that. I just think that this, this tool that the Supreme Court has given us, and the Constitution gives us, provides as much protection for students as it does, you know, as a reasonable standard. And I'd, I'd hate to see our administration not being able to address issues on a lower standard and just wait for every issue to become probable cause. That is a very, very high legal standard for the police to reach.
I think also, that's not changing. The changes that are proposed for this are really just this one line about the discretion to engage the police.
Okay.
And we're having a broader discussion about the policy in general, but the reason this is initially here is not.
So, may I, may I ask just a follow-up then? Kenny, given that you've established a pretty firm feeling on this policy, what is your desire that it be substantially rewritten?
Yeah, so, and actually, I think the history from policy committee, it came to the policy committee because of a minor tweak. It didn't become because of this issue at all. And when I read the policy, to me, it didn't seem to be a just policy. So, I, if I would want to rewrite whereby if the school has a suspicion of something going on that's important, that that gets, that the chain goes, that it goes to the SRO or whoever, and the SRO at that point takes it over. I wouldn't want Suzanne not to bring concerns or any other administrator or any teacher or any student a concern, but to me, it's the process that happens, and I, I think once we start talking about searches, I, I just think that should be handled by the proper legal forces and not by the school.
But, using the standard that the police have to apply, the fact that Susan goes, Suzanne goes to the, the SRO doesn't allow the SRO to then go search the car. They still have to have probable cause. Susan, Suzanne can't provide probable cause.
She could make her case, the SRO accumulates more information and decides whether it's substantive or not, and moves accordingly, and, you know, that's just my libertarian streak here, I guess.
Michael? Is this policy based on a, any SBA model policy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I wonder if we should have policy, or have it be a matter of policy? I, I guess, maybe I should back up. How many other administrators at the high school have the training that you have on conducting searches?
My training was conducted at Spalding High School, so I would be the only one that had that training. Mike McCann has been doing this job a very long time and has been, but he, I'm not aware if he has the same training that I have.
So, I wonder if it should be a matter of policy for the building administrators at the high school level to have formal training in conducting searches? And then my other question is, this policy is specific to vehicles that are parked on school property? How much of the student parking here is actually school property? Is Code Drive, Code Drive is not school property, I assume?
It'd be an extension of school property based on the fact they get to park there as a result of permission from the school. as a result of permission from the school.
Mm-hmm. That's how it's viewed. But again, we don't do a lot of car searches, so, you know, we've, we, we had one this year, and it wasn't even us that searched, it was the police that searched.
Is, is there a legal precedent for that? Maybe there is, but.
For what?
Has that been challenged? The idea that parking on a public parking space on a road is effec, is effectively an extension of the schools?
Students sign a, a, a agreement with the school.
Based on the waiver that they sign?
I mean.
That agreement also says school property.
Yeah.
So.
A, a student could very easily argue that if they are parked on the street, they have reasonable belief that they are not parked on school property.
They also have a very specific agreement that their car is going to be searched.
On school property. Well, that's the wording in the agreement. I'm looking at it right here.
I understand.
Yeah.
We, we have documents that the students sign in order to be able to drive to school. They have cer, there's certain, and I can, I can share that with you, if you would like to see what kids have to, and parents have to sign off on in order to have a car and drive to school.
I also will get an answer from our attorneys, Michael, related to your question, because I don't know the answer to that question.
I, I think this discussion just raises the issue that maybe some additional review, as you're describing, is warranted, just to make sure that the way we understand the process works, it actually does stand up in court. So, you want to, like, just not, not vote on this for first read?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I guess I, I wanted to just add that I'm in favor of the concept of this policy. I think that this is important capability for the administration to have, and I just want to make sure that we're doing it in an intact, you know, a way that does not create excessive liability to the district or risk to the district.
I'll have that answer for the next meeting, Michael.
Isn't like, and, you know, my legal background is not that great, but I, there's also a different standard with, like, freedom of speech on the school, isn't that correct?
Yeah, it can't be disruptive to the school environment. That's another Supreme Court decision.
Right, so, and, and, I mean, again, I, I have to agree with Kenny. I, it, I prefer to have the SRO do it. Irrespective of the training you had at Spalding, the SRO is in a different league with the amount of training that they've had. But again, the Supreme Court has, like, with speech and this, has created a different standard than, than applies. I, I, you know, it's a tool that they've given you. I personally like the higher standard, but I can understand why they've done it. So, I mean, the training element I do like.
I, I think the disclosure piece is important, too. I, I mean, we are, students are informed, agreeing to that as a condition of having a vehicle here.
Particularly parking on Code Drive, that you, it needs to be clearly spelled out that Code Drive is an extension of school property, and that by parking on Code Drive in one of those spots, you've agreed to the lower standard.
Yeah, just for the sake of clarity, I, I think what I find compelling in this policy is that I wouldn't want a scenario to occur where we, where no one was able to act on some sort of suspicion, some sort of threat, were the police not convinced that their threshold had been met. So, so I, I, I support the concept of this policy. I just think that the discussion and some of the issues that Kenny has raised, I think, encourages us to maybe be a little more thorough, to make sure that this really does do what we think it does. So.
Should we poll it for tonight?
So, I, I think so, and I think the, the piece that Michael recommended adding in terms of training, I think that's worth, worth adding as well.
Okay, so, so we're po, I mean, would this be okay if we polled?
Sure.
So, what else? I'll make a motion on something.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I'm just going to make a motion. We'll, I'll skip over J-L-I-E, student automobile use, and J-I-H-B, searches of student automobiles on school property, and just jump down to, I'd like to make a motion for approval of, actually, this, this says second read. I thought this was first read. I think that's, what's that?
We delayed this by a meeting, so maybe that was projected.
Oh, okay, because it's first read. We haven't done this yet. So, for first read, policy E-E-A-G, use of private vehicles to transport students, policy J-I-C-C, student conduct on school buses, and the other two are deletion. So, I guess just those two.
Oh, but J-F-C-B.
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 Oh, J, J-F's.
Care of school property, too.
Well, it says possible deletion, though. I guess I'm confused.
That's the one.
I'll just do those, those two for starters. Let's get two of them out of the way, anyway. E-E-A-G and J-I-C-C.
You're right.
Moved by Denise, is there a second for those two policies?
You're right.
Second by Brian. Are we okay with those, to vote on those?
Wait, hold on. Which one?
J.
E-E-A-G, use of private vehicles to transport students, that doesn't have anything to do with this whole issue, and J-I-C-C, student conduct on school buses.
Okay.
And there's just minor changes to each one.
So, we have.
Nothing to do with this stuff.
We have a motion and a second for those two. Is there further discussion on those two? Are we okay? All those in favor of those two, approving those two for first read, raise your hand. Seven in favor, those two are approved.
Okay.
So, J-F-C-B, what's, what's this?
So, that's deletion.
Right.
So, yeah, so.
So, we have two policies for deletion, or?
Yes.
Right.
I, I don't have it on my, this is my, is J-F-C-B, which is care of school property by students, is that deletion?
Right, because it's deletion, because that is cut, wait, wait a minute.
No.
Yeah, because that's covered.
It has to be first read here, but.
For deletion is the one after, where it says on the agenda, GDBAA.
Yeah, this, this one just, it has, like, just.
This is just approval.
Yeah, I think that one is first read.
No, I have it as an exit. I'm looking at my original, I'm looking at my original notes from policy committee. J-F-C-B, we decided, oh, no, we just changed it to just the first sentence, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Move that one?
Sure. So, this is for policy J-F-C-B, care of school property by students, for first read.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Brian. It's pretty uncontroversial, don't they? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. And then you have one for deletion, right?
Right. So, I'll make a motion for policy GDBAA, support staff, for deletion.
Moved by Denise, is there a second? By Brian? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. Okay, that concludes the policy work, then, right?
Yes.
School Board Committee updates?
I bet. Manifest Committee met and reviewed the manifest.
Were they okay?
Everything was fine.
Good.
The committee updates? Just maybe a question. When do you think the negotiating team will be meeting with the Gil?
I don't have a, an answer for that. I'm assuming this month.
Okay.
I'm not sure that Wendy has locked a date yet.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of the thing about this month, is a.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
Okay. And will we be meeting, before we meet the negotiating team? How's that?
Yeah, I'll bring the negotiating team together. Dan loves that. That's his favorite part.
Sure is. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean Rubine from Lee. I went on the Washington DC trip with Jay and the middle school, and I wanted to thank them for taking me along and say I had a great time with all the kids and a new admiration for those teachers. I heard they had a wonderful 12-hour-long trip back on the bus. I flew home Sunday night.
Mm, yeah. Real admiration for that.
The truth comes out.
Okay, you have the next meeting, so we'll be at the middle school next, or next meeting. So, I'll need a motion to go into non-public session on the basis of.
C.
C, number three, yeah.
So, I'll move that we move into non-public, New Hampshire State Law RSA-91-8,32, for see matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person, et cetera.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, by Denise, and need a roll call? Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Hallen, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay.